Okay. Good evening and welcome to the January thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. And now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'll read the school district's mission statement now. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. Now, we're ready for our first item agenda tonight, and this is the first of a couple of board celebrations, but this one is very, very good. It's a board celebration regarding the Reconnect, Graduate enrollment program, and Ellen Vanderloo is here, as is Crystal Buzza, and I will invite both of them to come up and bring their guests. Ellen has worked with the Reconnect, Graduate program here now in its second year, started, I think, kind of based on a program in Des Moines, but it was extremely successful this year. It was a great program, and it has been recognized by the Points of Light Foundation, which is the largest organization in the world dedicated to volunteer service. So Ellen, with that introduction, I'll turn it over to you if you could give us some more information.
Well, Tara, you should join us, too. I wanted to invite everybody that was in the audience, but Mr. Young, you and other board members also participated in this event, and Dr. Norris. It just gives me great pleasure to present to you this lovely certificate that we received from the Points of Light Foundation, and it's signed by the first President Bush-
Yes.
-who started this program. And we were the five thousand eightieth Point of Light in the country, so we had our day in the sun.
Yes.
But it was really just such a pleasure to, and surprise, to be nominated for this award, and I just want to share it with all our volunteers, and I think especially this year because of the diversity and the interpreters, and kind of the passion of the people that went out, and we knocked on almost a hundred and seventy doors, and we had sixty students that came back, and I wanted to have my secretary kind of see where those students were today, and of the students, we had seven students that had been dropped that came back, and six of those seven are still in school today. And we had fifty-three students who we labeled as no-shows, that they hadn't come back to school, and as of this week, we have fifty-four, because even one more came back, but we did have one from that group drop, and then we also had a graduation already.
Oh, fantastic.
So I think that's wonderful, that I really was kind of shocked. I was prepared to have a large number, maybe, of attrition again, but so far, we still have these kids in school. So I think our staff and our volunteers all deserve a lot of credit for this.
Yes. Well, thank you all, and all the volunteers. I know you've been bringing food on that Saturday.
Wonderful.
We actually enjoyed your food, too. As a school board, we were meeting a lot here in the month of December, and we had your food one evening as well for a board meeting, and we talked about that, your volunteer service earlier this fall, so thank you very much for that. But all the volunteers, and everybody, but everybody, Ellen, you and your office, and everybody involved, Crystal as well. The Courier did a great job with coverage, media coverage, KWWL did, I know as well, but it's, this is certainly a very well-deserved honor, so thank you all for what you're doing. So, thank you.
And Ellen? Ellen, I just wanted to reiterate to you and Crystal and all of the volunteers that this, you know, taking that four hours, look at the effects of life you have done to show a kid you cared about him, and you actually didn't know him, came back to their house, went to their door on a Saturday morning. I just, it just shows the true face-to-face effect, and I just thank you all for doing that.
Well, and I'd like to point out, too, that there was a lot of staff that volunteered on that Saturday morning as well, so it was really nice. I think it felt good for them, too, to be able to go out and face-to-face at the home-
And thanks for the status update. At least that clarifies, I think, there was an implication in a question, caller Courier question or something a while back, saying, "If these students come back, and they're there on the count day, and then they drop a month later, do you still get paid?" And the answer was yes, but they're not dropping, so you essentially have a hundred percent that are still in school, so that clarifies that particular implication.
And one graduate. I mean, that makes it worth it right there.
Oh, yeah, it's inspiring to hear that. Those numbers were great to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
All right. And the next item on our agenda is another very good thing, and this is regarding the mentoring program that we have here. And it's a teammate, teammates mentoring program that's been in place for a couple of years-
Four years.
-as well, it's four years now, and it's similar to the, what was in place before, I think, with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, but teammates is a much more, I would say, involved program, and we've had very good luck with mentoring. Mentoring is incredibly important. We're always looking for new mentors, and as part of that process, this is, the month of January is National Mentoring Month. And Ellen, if you could also talk about the teammates program here now, and kind of what's going on, and I don't know if we have any of the advisory board members here tonight-
Well, Angela Weekly is on our advisory board, and Crystal Buzza is on our advisory board-
That's right, yes.
And I'm not sure if anybody else is or not, but-
Yes.
Yes, this is, January is National Mentoring Month, so I always like to draw attention to our mentors and also to the need for more mentors, and I'm happy to report we have over a hundred and sixty matches now in the Waterloo Community Schools, and we also have mentors in our schools from Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and kind of, interestingly, I guess, I am a Big Brothers, Big Sisters mentor, because I have my mentee, Nash Leitod. Come on up. She and I have been together, we are a Big Brothers, Big Sisters match, and we've been together since she was in fifth grade next door at Lowell School, and this year, she's a junior at East, so-
Yeah.
She somehow puts up with this old lady that comes every week, and she teaches me new things about fashion and music, and she tries to make me a little bit more hip, anyway, but I just would like to say publicly that I've really enjoyed our relationship together, and I'm looking forward to the day she graduates, because we're gonna party. So, and then also, I have a special certificate here that I'd like to present to Angela Weekly. This is a certificate of appreciation, signed by Governor Branson and Lieutenant Colonel Reynolds, for being a mentor.
Thank you.
And Angela, you've served on the advisory board for a little while here now, haven't you?
I think I've been a mentor for four years, but I've been aboard, on the advisory council for three years.
Probably, I didn't really keep track of that, but-
Three years, I think, but yeah.
Yeah, and you've also mentored with Big Brothers, Big Sisters as well, right?
No, I just have a bunch of family, so it's like that.
She does a lot of mentoring.
I do a lot of mentoring.
Well, and the whole thing about mentoring is just having a caring adult in a young person's life, and that's what it's all about, and Angela and all of you, I know, do that, but I just appreciate the board's support of our mentoring program. This program is funded through our at-risk funds, so I know in Nebraska, many teammates' chapters have to raise money every year to support their programs, and it's a relief to me that I don't have to spend my time doing that.
If I could put in one last plug, if anybody's watching or in the audience interested in joining, how do they join?
They can just call here to the administrative office, they can look on our website, there's an application under the Waterloo Schools website, under the volunteer section, they can call me, four three three nineteen twenty.
Four three three nineteen twenty, the general number's four three three eighteen hundred, and then the website's waterlousschools.org, so, okay. Well, Ellen, thank you, Angela, thank you as well, Crystal also, and all of our mentors, we really do appreciate it. All right, the next item on our agenda is another very good thing, and this we've been looking forward to for a while. This is an update from the Waterloo Schools Foundation, and there is a gift that's coming, but it's a very special time in the foundation's history, because Britt Young is here, she is the executive, new executive director of the Waterloo Schools Foundation, and I think, is this your second time here since, as executive director?
No.
Or your first?
First, yes.
First time as executive director.
I've been seasoned in my other positions, but not this.
That's right, that's right. Britt's on, has been before the board a number of times before, but in the past, but has been on the executive director of the Schools Foundation for a couple of months, with a number of changes, moving offices, getting a new office put in place about, what, six weeks ago, or thereabouts?
Two, two weeks.
Two weeks ago, excuse me, and moving, but, so there've been a lot of good things going on, but probably most importantly is the school foundation just crossed a threshold of giving away five hundred thousand dollars to the Waterloo Schools, and that's in a pretty short time, about three years. And it's, it's something that is having a very real effect. I was at Rotary today, and there was a presentation on the Hoover Observatory, and it, its renovation was really kick-started, I think, by the Schools Foundation, so there are a number of good things that are going on. Britt, I've talked enough, I'll now turn it over to you to talk about it, and then we have a, basically a raffle, because we're gonna give away something to one of our schools.
Yes. All right, so I am the new friendly face of the Waterloo Schools Foundation, so I actually have a pretty good gig. I get to make people happy by writing checks, so that's always fun. So this was a really fantastic opportunity for me. I have had a soft spot in my heart for the Waterloo Community School District for a while. My husband is a member of the staff of one of the school buildings, and I think this is his ninth year of service, so I have been involved in some of my past positions with Hawkeye Community College and Junior Achievement. You've seen me visit every now and again, but I'm really delighted to be able to tell the story of Waterloo Community Schools and of our students. It's a pleasure to go into people's office each day and surprise them with fun things to say, to get them excited about what we're doing, and usually surprise them with fun facts that they don't know. It's always great to tell them that we've crossed that threshold of giving away our five hundred thousandth dollar, which does put us in the very, very top tier of all of the school foundations in the entire state, sometimes dramatically above some others, so in just three years of existence, that's pretty phenomenal. So I can't take credit for that, but what I can take credit for is enthusiasm moving forward, and definitely, my motto is, we have ten thousand nine hundred plus students, and my goal is to increase the likelihood that all of them will graduate globally prepared. So I can do that by helping to remove some barriers, I can do that by helping to get some people to write some checks that will help us with fun projects, and so that makes my job pretty fun. So we do have a new home. If you, we're going to be doing a ribbon cutting on February thirteenth, and we'll be putting out all kinds of information, but the public is invited to attend, and that will be a fun event, and our new home is at two oh one Tower Park Drive, in the Tower Park Building. We're on the first floor, in Suite one oh six, and we are enjoying that space very much, and it allows us great access to the community, to have our own space of our own, but also, you'll see me in various buildings, and usually this one from time to time. So I thought it would be fun. I think we need to celebrate our milestones, it helps motivate us going forward. So we posed the idea at one of our board meetings of doing a fun little drawing to commemorate a successful two thousand and thirteen, and get us motivated for two thousand and fourteen, and just three short months, we'll be giving away more innovative teaching grants at our breakfast on April twenty-fourth, so that is just around the corner, so this will kind of get us kick-started for that campaign and get everyone excited. So tonight, we're gonna do a drawing, I've got a fun little box, it's got all the school's name in, and Dr. Lindeman can testify, she looked at all the cards, so yes. So I've been very paranoid. We have all the cards here, and all the school buildings' names, including Elk Runner, on these cards, and what we're going to do is Mr. Schmidt, I've already decided I'm gonna pick on you, so-
The board member that has served the longest.
Yes. I'm gonna walk up, and he's gonna pick a card out, and that school building is going to win ten Nexus Seven tablets, we've actually upgraded from the Kindles, so we found a good deal on ten Nexus Seven tablets. This will allow great STEM learning to continue in our schools, and continue education with technology that will help our students. It's a great size for any student, but also young people, since we do have some elementary schools in here, too. So this is the fun part, we get to find out who wins, so. And the winner is Pointer Elementary.
Oh.
Very nice. So we'll be following up with the administration at Pointer to give them the good news, and thank you for listening.
Thanks, Britt.
Well, Britt, thank you for being here, thanks to everybody. Jack Locke is the immediate past president of the School Foundation is here as well, and who just did an awful lot of work over the past year. But Britt, thank you for being here, and we welcome you, the first of, I'm sure, many board meetings in which you're attending, but thank you for all you're doing as well, and we look forward to a very successful two thousand and fourteen as well. Two thousand and thirteen was great, so everything's pointed in the right direction, and with five hundred thousand dollars already, it's making a real impact, a very positive impact, so thank you all. And congratulations to Pointer. All right, the next item on our agenda is another very good thing, it's the fourth out of four, and then we'll get into things like policies and that sort of thing, so, but this one's very good as well. This is a presentation of a rebate check from Mid-American Energy of just over two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
I buy a lot of tablets.
Exactly. And Mike Messina is here from Mid-American Energy. The program involves constructing and designing the building in an energy-efficient manner, and we have Kate Payne and representatives from our architects here as well. Orange is a beautiful building, and it's also an energy-efficient building, and Mike, thank you for being here, if you could just give us some background information on this, and then we'll have a presentation.
I think you did it all. No, actually, this project started a couple of years ago, and I guess first, you mentioned Kate, we have Kate Payne from Envision, and we have Brent Wasco from Modus. They were a part of the energy team that was working on this project, along with Marty Metcalf from the Waterloo Schools, as well as the White Group, who is the company that facilitates this, our energy efficiency program for this type of thing, and basically, it's an all-inclusive program, it's called our commercial new construction program, and the White Group works with these folks to offer other alternatives to, let's say, state-mandated minimum programs to enhance or increase the energy efficiencies within the facilities. And like you said, I've, first off, I've already presented the real check, but I have a presentation or check for two hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars that I'd like to present to the Waterloo Schools, and along with this, in the schools, the projects that you talked about that were a part of the energy efficiency program totaled roughly six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, is what you put into it, and with what you put in, with this rebate, you have six point seven years to pay for everything through your energy savings, and your energy savings are estimated, again, against the Iowa Energy Code of sixty-three thousand dollars a year. So you guys made some really smart moves, and with these folks over here, and with the White Group, made a lot of the right decisions, so I applaud you for that. Also, one step further, and I shared with the team members over here, this is the fifteenth time that we've awarded checks in regards to our energy efficiency program. Just to let you know, from two thousand and four to tonight, Mid-American Energy has awarded the Waterloo Community School District one million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. So that's what the Waterloo School District has received in energy efficiency rebates on the commercial new construction programs. So, thank you.
That's fantastic, and thank you for being here, and the-
You don't want the check?
Yeah, that's a huge check, yeah. And Dr. Norris, the superintendent, will come up to get it, and while he's doing that, just for explanation, the energy, yeah. One more.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Great. Is there an itemized list or a report of how the savings, what projects led to the rebates?
There, for this particular school?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can get that for you, I don't have that here this evening, so I can, I can get a copy for you if you wish.
If you would, I'd be interested in seeing that, thank you.
Pardon me? Yeah, Marty Metcalf would have a copy, certainly.
And Mike, I guess just in general, though, the types of things, like geothermal, heating, and cooling-
Well, you're talking about lighting, you're talking about the envelope, you're talking about insul- I mean, it, basically, anything and everything that you're talking about, that, you know, from insulating the facility, the types of glass that you're putting in the windows, whether or not if they're, you know, energy-efficient or low-E type glass, these folks could speak better to that, but it encompasses basically anything and everything that makes up that facility, so, yeah.
Great, it's fantastic. And talking about the payback over, what, six point seven years?
Six point seven years on this particular-
I think, so that means getting to year seven and year eight.
Correct.
It's, it's reducing-
Correct, and you gotta figure continuing on, you're gonna save-
Exactly.
-sixty-three thousand dollars a year, so, yeah, as opposed to the current Energy Code.
Well, our thanks to you, and thanks to Mid-American, but-
Thank you very much.
-Modus, Envision, thank you all.
Absolutely, to our team.
Kate and Brent, yeah, yeah.
And on a personal note, I just wanted to thank Mike, this will be his last time presenting the district a check, because, thank you for all your hard work and sending your four children through the district.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you working for the schools.
Oh, thank you.
Does he have something planned as well?
Well, he's gonna just retire and have honey-do lists, right?
That's gonna be a lot more complicated than this, right?
Mike, thank you, and again, thanks to Mid-American. All right, and that'll conclude the board celebration items. Next, we'll move on to the public comment period, and is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the board in the public comment period? If so, I'll read a card. You're more than welcome to, I'm free to, wanna encourage everybody. If there's nobody, though, then I'll move on to the next. Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda, and tonight, the consent agenda consists of the minutes of our December meetings, and there was one regular board meeting, and then four, excuse, or three, excuse me, special board meetings. The regular board meeting on December ninth, special board meetings on December tenth, December eighteenth, and December twentieth. Those minutes are one item. The next item is personnel appointments and adjustments since our last meeting, and then finally, the third of the three items is, are bills due and payable since our last meeting. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members wish to be removed? Okay, and hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, any discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and the chair votes aye, motion carried. And I, I realize I made a mistake coming back here, and Mike just left, we actually technically have to vote to approve, accept, the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which was my fault. So we still have the check, right?
We do.
All right. Yes, yes, and that's probably the most important one. This is Exhibit D on page seven, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve and accept the check from Mid-American Energy in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, and any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, chair votes aye, motion carried. Hopefully, we're in the clear, sorry about that. The next item on our agenda, then, is the, a number of board policy changes, and these are Exhibit H that begins on page thirty-six, and there are five of them. Four of them are kind of general cleanup of existing policies, and the fifth is a weighted grade policy, which is new regarding the International Baccalaureate Program and some other of the advanced classes. The, this is up for first reading, so we won't vote on it tonight, we'll vote on it in, at our meeting in two weeks. The board policies are regarding the board member oath of office, and that's Section two oh two point two. The next is recognition of past service on the Board of Education, that is Section two oh two point four three. Then we have agenda preparation and dissemination, that is Section two ten point nine. We also have public participation of meetings of the Board of Education, that is Policy two eleven point zero. And then, again, those four were just basically cleaning up some language, and then the last one is weighted grades policy, it's a new policy, and it's five oh four point two two. And these policy changes have all gone through the policy subcommittee, and Tara Thomas is here to talk about kind of that process, and answer any questions that we have, so.
Sure, so I'm not the IB expert, however, I know somebody, Sharice Ortman, who could speak more specifically to any questions or concerns regarding the weighted grades policy that is resulting from our need to get in line with the IB requirements.
I have a question, and this might be in the regs that, if there are regs that are associated with this, but I'm hoping that the grades given in at least the AP courses, I'm not sure how the IB courses work, but will be the national test. So if they get a five on the national test, then they get an A, if they get a four, they get a B-
On a placement test.
On the, on the test, and that, that assumes that they're all required to take the test, which I also support.
And in terms of the regulations you're referencing, we did talk about this just being the initial policy passing, so to speak, and then fleshing out the regulations as we proceed and move forward based on all the input from the parties involved, ed services, and yourselves.
Maybe that needs to be in the pol- I guess I'd like to know how that all is really gonna work, but, you know, we haven't required the students to take exams, I think we ought to, and I think the grade ought to be based on the national result.
And we probably need to pay for it if we're gonna make it.
Yeah, well, we discussed that at the meeting with Sharice, that we would pay for the exams, and also, they would be required to take them, but I don't know if that necessarily needs to be spelled out in this, I think, maybe in the-
We have regs coming.
Yeah.
That's probably in the reg, but the principle of-
Because the regs would be the-
-of whether it's a teacher's saying grade, or whether it's the result, because there's a separate grade, I think.
But the tests wouldn't come back graded, right, till like July, and for the seniors, it would be a mute point, really, right?
Oh, yeah, with the timing.
Could I, I just wanna jump in here, I know, we did not, or we have not at this point in time, talked about a high-stakes grade, where it's solely, where it is solely related to, like, the AP exam, yes, they will be taking it, yes, we would pay for that, if they get a passing score three, four, five, then they get an A or B, C, we did not talk about that high-stakes grading. We, we will be talking about in the regs whether that, how that plays a role in their grade, and if it can, depending on when the grades are due versus whatever, but we did not, I wanna be real clear, we did not talk about solely, solely connecting the grade to their performance on the end test. We did not, we have not talked about that at that, at this point, not solely.
And as a former admissions counselor, I, the issue that you talked about, it not coming until July, that would really slow down processes for the scholarship process, for the different institutions, especially private institutions- for the different institutions, especially private institutions. So we could, I, I don't think that it's common practice to wait for the test score in order to give them the, the five points for the A or the grade.
Well, and my concern with that, Lyle, would be, like, you and I, for instance, I was just there today, and they will accept an AP score of three as getting college credit. And then we are going to say a three's a C, in what you just said. I mean, so to me, that would not be equitable. But I think that's for a different discussion. I, I do.
And I guess, Mike, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I still think we have to make sure that the expectation is there, however we work out that detail, that we are take, that the students are taking that test. I don't think there's been...
The rigor of everyone, too.
The rigor, not everybody has taken it. And that's more important to me than the...
It is to me, too, but, but the other thing, what we're really saying here is there's only going to be one valedictorian. If, if you implement this, in all likelihood, there's not going to be four-point-zero. There's going to be, somebody's going to have a four-point-zero-one-three or whatever it is. So this, there won't be ties anymore. This will be one valedictorian for all practical purposes, so...
And I could, yeah, I could share a little bit on that, too. We definitely are looking at a, a phase-in process, whereas we wouldn't, because right now, I believe, and I think the, the consensus of the group, and maybe the Policy Review Committee, was just that to, to make this switch right now with kids who are juniors or sophomores, really, it is, is, is not the right way to go. So we have talked about the phase-in process, starting with the students who would be current eighth graders or seventh graders, so that we would phase that in as they go, to be fair to the, the children who are, you know, closer to graduation than, than that.
But just to be clear, long-term, that's, it's going to have that effect.
That is, that is clear. Yep. That would be the impact.
And then, also, I, I don't know, this may, or may not be relevant, but an increasing number of, of high schools in Iowa are not releasing, uh, class rank.
Yeah, I saw that.
We're going to release two class rankings.
If that...
One weighted and one unweighted.
Well...
The colleges will...
Or should we, or should we release none? It's becoming more popular to release none.
Okay.
Well, and we discussed that, that we would have two separate, because you can't correlate the non-weighted grade with the weighted grade and put them all as one valedictorian.
So which one are you going to choose, though, to send? You can only send one to...
No, they're both on your transcript. Both numbers are on your transcript.
So if, if this helps you, Lyle, as an admissions counselor, when I would get people's transcripts, I would look at both their weighted and unweighted GPA, and I, and then I would also look at their class rank.
Yep.
And I would use that to determine, we have, like, different calculations to determine how much dollars that they got automatically without coming for a scholarship day, and then we would have them come. Some of them would then be invited for a scholarship day. And so I, I would think that if we made that decision without looking and talking to the institutions that our, our kids are going to, I think that it would be, I mean, that would, I can't, I don't think we can make that decision without knowing this, to not release that, because I, I think that they're still looking at that, I'm pretty sure. I mean, I, I've left admissions two years ago, but we're still going to do it.
I'm saying, there's, there's an increasing number, quite a few actually, of high schools now, that have elected not to do that. Exactly why and what the effect is...
I haven't, I haven't heard that. I'm not arguing that that's the case.
No, they, they are.
That, that is correct. There's a number of districts within the state that stopped releasing it. One of the districts that I was a part of, six, seven years ago, had already done that at that point, and stopped releasing class rank. They want kids to be measured based on their individual pieces, not based on a measurement of the district, because you could potentially have a young person who has a three-point-five and still be fairly low in that class rank, because it's a strong district. The other things, as we can speak to, is there's a wide level of potential grade inflation that can take place in different places as well. So if I come in with a three-five in one district, is that a three-five comparable to another district? So you want kids to be measured based on their individual things that they bring to it, not something that's based on the whole system.
And the point was, I think, that, if I recall the articles now, that I think the state institutions accept everybody in the top fifty percent.
Yeah.
Okay? And the schools have found out they've had more students accepted since they quit releasing whether or not they're in the top fifty percent. More of them have been accepted at the state institutions, because they don't have that line at which to make that judgment.
Oh, it's kind of counterintuitive, but in some ways, but yeah.
But they, some of them figured it out anyway. I mean, I worked in an admissions office where if it wasn't on there, you penciled it out and figured out where your rank was.
Yeah, but you're extra bright.
This is, this is, uh...
Yeah. It was the same thing.
I did.
This is very much of a philosophical, uh, policy, and we feel like we've put safeguards in the policy by releasing, whether we release or not, we're going to calculate weighted and unweighted grades, so that no child will be hurt, but many children may be helped by the, by the policy. But make no mistake about it, colleges are going to do whatever they want to do in their admissions. They're going to weight or unweight, however, but this, if this encourages young people to take more rigorous courses, then I'm, I'm all for it. But please don't ever quit, offer, if you offer rankings, make sure you offer either ranking and offer either weighted or unweighted.
Right.
Also, to clarify, I believe these are only for IB and AP classes, so unless you take one of those classes, your grade point average will still be based on a four-point-oh. So it's only in the inclusion of these extra classes where that grade average can move up above a four, four-point-oh.
So we might have two valedictorians.
We have fourteen now.
Forty, fourteen, yeah.
And, and I guess the, getting back to the policy and kind of the underlying purpose of it, is, as I understand it, and I'm kind of asking this as a question, is that with grade, if there is grade inflation, yeah, you would have, traditionally, valedictorian only have one, and salutatorian meant you were second and that sort of thing. And then with grades, everybody was getting a four point, so you'd get ten or fourteen or twenty. And then the concern was that students wouldn't take harder classes and didn't want to risk their four-point-oh. So there was a disincentive to take the more rigorous classes. Then the weighted grade policy is designed to correct that. Is that, is, is designed to put the incentive back in? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's certainly...
Sharice has, can weigh in on that.
No pun intended. I'll weigh in.
Pun intended. Way in. Carrie.
So...
Very good.
Yes, and the reason, that's exactly right. It was truly that, well, we spent three weeks, there was a group, and there were teachers, counselors, there was a parent on that committee, and we even conducted a survey with the Waterloo students, ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders. Oh, I'm Sharice Ortmann. Mr. Schmidt, we haven't met yet, but I think I've met all the other board members, IB Coordinator, Honored IB Coordinator for the Waterloo Schools. But the district data, we had one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade students in Waterloo who were asked the question, would weighted grades motivate you to take more challenging courses? So that was the question. With the results being sixty-two percent of our students said yes, thirty-two said no, and six percent said maybe. And then why? And it was open-ended. So I compiled that data and broke it down into different areas. There were extrinsic reasons, forty-five percent. A quote would be, I want to have a higher GPA, I want to be recognized for the hard work. Also, we had thirty-one percent of the students who were intrinsically motivated, who would put on their reason, I want to challenge myself, sixteen percent with no reason. And then there was also extrinsic, which is broken down to avoid punishment, eight percent said, I don't want to lower my grade point and I don't want to be stressed out. So we really took from the student data, as well as the teachers in the Waterloo schools, so all three high schools, eighty-nine teachers, took a survey on are you for or against weighted grades in our district? Seventy-six percent of our teachers said they were for it, twenty-four percent against, and the open-ended question is what should be weighted, and again, this was open-ended. And the highest percentage, forty-five percent, AP, IB honors, advanced courses, fifteen percent. And then you can see, I can give you a copy of this, it breaks down into fifteen percent for other college courses, eleven percent required, eight percent, six percent math. But the reason that we went with AP and IB is that it's, um, there's a way that we can look at AP and IB, and it has an elevated standard that the universities acknowledge. There's an external moderator when they take the exams in May, that allows them to be more objective, and they compare it against nationwide in the AP standard, international standard within International Baccalaureate. Both AP and IB, I don't know if you know, but those teachers go through training. And both AP and IB, you have to submit a course line, and it has to be approved by the organization. So because of those three factors, and the colleges recognize it on college, college entrance forms, and I have Blair Tylen here, who's the West High Counselor, and she works quite often with the region universities, as well as Debbie Lee here, if you want to speak with them, too. But she will tell you that quite often, when the universities contact her, they'll say, do you have International Baccalaureate or Advanced Placement Programming? And if so, are students involved? And if so, what courses did they take? So based on that standard, that's why we decided AP, IB.
So if you're going to change, and I want to be perfectly clear, somebody's going to end up with a four-point-zero-eight, so all the four, none of the four points will be valedictorians. Correct?
At this point, we're working on the regulation...
With weighted and unweighted, can you...
Go ahead, Mike, what's that?
With, if you have weighted and unweighted, that, the next step would be figuring out, okay, who's a valedictorian? Do you just need to be unweighted at four?
No, the, the awards will all be done. The awards will be done with the weighted.
Okay.
And...
So if you like not to take any courses, you don't have a possibility of getting above a four point?
Correct. And I, I would just urge everybody to consider the policy tonight. We'll bring the regs. I know everyone wants to get into the regs. We had to get the policy on the books before our IB visit coming up in the next few weeks.
I have one more question. Was there any discussion, then, of, of differentiating? A, a lot of schools have a A, A-, B+, B-, B-. We lump them all together, so an A- counts as a four point, same as an A. So if you're going to start differentiating, why wouldn't you do that as well?
We would. We would, and it's on the table.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Dr. Lindman, one more question. You mentioned earlier that this wouldn't come into effect until the incoming ninth graders for next year. How does that affect sophomores who will be juniors next year for their graduating grade point average?
Yeah. We would, we would be, nothing would impact them right now. So, yeah. So we would be...
As juniors, then, they will have the weighted grades, and it will take effect for them?
They could, they would have that, but right now, we would have that dual system. So they would have a weighted GPA, they would have an unweighted GPA for now, but nothing really is, there's nothing high stakes based on that weighted grade, except for that it is published, so that the child knows.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify your, the way you were going to phase it in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and again, this is up for, for first reading, and it'll be up for vote at our next meeting in two weeks. But thank you all, Mrs. Tylen, Debbie Lee, Sharice, thank you all for being here to discuss it, because it is a change. And Tara, thank you as well. It is a change, obviously, with the weighted grades, but, um, oh, Sue, go ahead.
Tara, I was just wondering, on the two-eleven, okay, the public participation, this is different than the information from individuals and delegates on the agenda, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again, Sue.
Okay. The two-eleven shows public participation in meetings of the Board of Education, okay? That is different than the information from individuals and delegations, correct?
No, I think it's the same, and, but...
So then, how, we don't, people that come to talk, we don't make them give us twenty-four hours to let them know they're coming to the meeting to talk?
Notice of the time.
No, I, yeah, that, that's a very good point. I think it's just the public, we give notice that there will be a meeting, a regular board meeting.
Oh, got it, right. We, exactly. So it's, we would have to give notification via our website or through the Courier or another esteemed publication that would thereby open up that window for the public to come in.
Yes.
You know I love you, Andrew.
Right. It just, it reads a little unclear. It reads almost...
Okay, what, how would you guys suggest rewording it to me, to clarify that?
For, how about for opportunity?
A strict notice of the time for the opportunities for public participation. Because...
We don't need public participation in there at all. Notice of the time shall be given at least twenty-four hours.
Oh, okay, that makes sense, yeah.
Right.
Got you.
It makes it sound like, right, because when I read that, I thought, we don't require people...
Right, when we know that they're, that has happened in other districts, that they do require that, and so that would confuse folks.
Right. Cedar Falls, I think, is required.
That's right. Okay, that's great, that's a great point. Yes, so we would strike those three words.
Okay, thank you.
But no, it, it generally leaves the same public participation format, it's just, we talk about it, and it, this changed three or four years ago, where we added the portion about that it's, we can't use that time to talk about a specific employee, because personnel matters are confidential, and this just puts that in the regulation, um, as well, so it kind of cleans that up. The next item, oh, I'm, is there anything further on the policies?
No.
Okay, thank you. And again, well, it'll be up for vote here in two weeks. The next item, and the last action item on our agenda, is Exhibit I on page forty-three, and this is regarding funding for the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen At-Risk Education Program. I will get the motion on the table and then turn it over to Mr. Coughlin. And then I have another meeting to go to, so I'm going to step out and turn it over to Shanley McNally to finish the meeting, so please pardon me for leaving. The recommended mo, this is Exhibit I on page forty-three. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen application for funding at-risk education. Can you get that motion on the table?
So moved.
Thank you, a second.
Second.
Okay. In discussion, and Mr. Coughlin, if you could give us some information on this item.
I can review the structure of how the, the funding formula is made up of, but as far as the, the programming itself, I'm certainly not the expert on that, and Cora Turner is here, as well as others that can fill in on that, but for at-risk students, and you can see the bullet points of all the different programs that are made up of efforts that are addressing those issues, but they are, the, the funding mechanism is made up of our enrollment times, our cost per pupil, and we can do five percent of that, so three-point-three million, a little over three-point-three million that is directly raised through property taxes. And then we, the district has to match out of our other funding, another twenty-five percent, so one-point-one million, which brings a total of four-point-four million that is designated for at-risk funding. And if you look at the exhibit on forty-four, you can see the three-year summary of what revenue has gone into that program from four-point-two-eight-eight, four-point-three-two-two, and then this year would be four-point-four-eight-five for the available revenue. And then below that, based on the programs that are stated on the front, it gives you the twelve, thirteen actual expenditures by those groupings, what the budget was for thirteen, fourteen, which is in progress, and then the preliminary budget for fourteen, fifteen, which will be examined and discussed before that is made into an adopted budget, before the line item for fourteen, fifteen. So that's the, the dollar components of this program.
So the one, if we look at the tax levy rate, it's going to increase it by point-zero-nine mils. Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, we've had a really good track record of lowering the milli rate, I think, each I think, each of the last six, seven, six years.
That's going to come to an end this year, Mr. Smith. Our property evaluation has declined in three percent in, unless you want to have the most austere budget you've had.
Okay. So, that was my, that was my question, that can we still, is there any possibility of still maintaining a, at least a level rate? Because we've been decreasing, given, uh, what was, how much was the?
Well, this is just one part of a very big picture. And tonight, you are not locking in a particular dollar amount. You're saying, "We can levy up to this amount." So, it will still be part of your March and April decision of tax levy rate that you really want to apply to the whole this, to the whole budget. And as I was seeing the report of the valuation going down, and ours went down about three-point-one percent, until we get the aid and levy and all of the components that go, go into that and how it changes from year to year, there's really no way to predict until we get that formula, how it's really going to affect our end numbers. But, of course, with the, with the amount going up on at-risk and the valuation going down, it would obviously raise our tax rate. But that's just one component of a much bigger picture. So, that's really what we're doing tonight is, with the recommendation of passing this, is that this gives us the ability to levy, to enact this program up to these limits.
Okay. Thanks.
Is there any further questions?
Cora, do you have any comments?
First of all, good evening. I'm very excited about the at-risk program that Waterloo Schools offers. I often say that we offer a menu of programs to meet the needs of our students. Our greatest reward that I've seen to this moment is just, I certify dropouts before Christmas break. We're tremendously down in the number of students that have dropped out of Waterloo School. And I think that's a credit to the programs that we offer. I enjoy working with students at-risk. I think our programs are geared to make sure all students are successful. And I think the staff that we have working with these programs, I'm excited for and about also.
And Cora, I just want to, for those people who are watching, I mean, this is a nice, long list. Like you said, this is a great menu. This is our, this is Grad Connect, this is Expo, this is after-school programs, WebC, PBDA. It isn't just one, one-
No, it is not.
One-size-fits-all. I think you do, you and your staff do a great job in figuring out those needs for those students. And this is a pretty comprehensive list, so.
Thank you. And it's also a number of outside community schools that also take the value of working within our programs. We, as you know, the Board established a 2080 agreement, given those buildings, those districts, those opportunities. And we take advantage of offering those services to others also.
Something that I feel pretty good about, the, the research on spending money correctly for at-risk kids indicates that those districts that are actually bending the needle and raising kids up to grade level are spending approximately twenty-five percent more per pupil. And so, this is five percent. And I think with what we've done with that five percent has been well-spent. I have been every year with my colleagues in the UEN trying to argue for a change in the formula if they, if Iowa was really serious about bending the, the at-risk needle. But I think we're doing remarkable things with the five percent. I'd like to have another twenty percent. But it wouldn't be fair to the Waterloo taxpayers, the way it works in Iowa. The way many states do at-risk funding, it's a part of the state funding formula.
So, what, uh, we've got a list of ten items here. Is there any best practice or is there any programs or initiatives that you've seen elsewhere that we don't have that would be beneficial if we did?
My counselors on the elementary level often kind of tug at me to start something on the elementary level for elementary students working in-
Counseling at the elementary level?
Working with programming at the elementary level. There's a number of students that we feel, if we could start gearing educational services toward them a little earlier, it may benefit us in the long run. But that's something that we toss around quite a bit, doing something on the elementary level.
Okay.
We started a program two years ago called Bridges, where we've worked with the middle school, bridging them into high school. I think we saw some success in that program. So, maybe we need to look at bridging them now from elementary to middle, working more in that, in that area.
I, I think that would be good to do, since I worked in the elementary for thirty-some years, yes.
Yes.
If we can start there with them, maybe we'll have more success.
I agree.
Any further question?
Well, and I just want to thank your staff too, Cora, because we are on the innovative edges in a lot of these programs. You know, I mean, the mall school, the, you know, the, the programs that a lot of districts our size or even larger don't even have. I mean, I just, I just think we really are looking to meet the needs of all students and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to staff.
Going back to that earlier thing this evening, it sure was fun being at the doors, handing young people a smorgasbord of options. And that's what you're saying. And, and Cora has, that, it's just like, it's almost, there's no reason they couldn't come up with that, that would, we wouldn't have something they could do.
Yeah. Some of the parents were like, "You have to at the mall?" Yeah.
Get your, get your diploma.
Lyle, I wanted to hop in one thing on your question, which I think is a really good one. When, when I read in the paper yesterday about the, the front page, the partnership that UNIQ is doing, and so, when you talk about what else could be on this list, Cora and I had a long conversation about this today, really hooking up with the community. A lot of these are really Waterloo Schools menu options. And I think there's just room for growth when we look at the whole community. So, that would be something that would be on my list. And, and we, we started that conversation. There's really a lot of steam, you know, motivating in the, brewing in the community. And I think that's, there, there's really a great way to go there.
So, it may leverage some other dollars as well.
It, it might. I mean, you know, part pooling money, you know? There's some really great options out there, so. Okay. Now, this, now is everybody done? We all good? All right. There's a motion on the table. Would all those who vote to approve, the Board of Education approve the 2014-2015 application for funding at-risk education? Please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And that is the end of our action items this evening. So, let's move on to our superintendent's report.
And a relatively short report tonight. Just want to keep the board informed about the progress of our athletic committee. I know it's been slow-going, but we are making progress. We have a, a tentative set of some recommendations that we're going to be adding to them. We're finishing up some surveying in the week of the end of January. And so, we'll have some other discussions. So, my hope is that the very latest by the second board meeting in March, first board meeting in April, to have a, a set of recommendations to you and to see if there's any other budget implications or anything like that.
Gary, we owe you some thanks, those of us who I know have pushed for this. Even though it's taken a while, I think that we've had the right people at the table. And I think that was critical to make sure that we didn't just have coaches and we didn't just, we've had a lot of input and we've had a lot of meetings, some of which I haven't been able to get to. But I know, Mike Kinsey, you've been able to get to some too. And I really do think the right people are at the table. So, I'm looking forward to these next few weeks of kind of synthesizing what we found out and really coming forward with some recommendations that have teeth.
I think that a secret, thank you Shanley, I agree. I think a secret is going to be seeing what our partnerships can leverage with the city and with youth soccer, or not youth soccer, youth sports foundation. Because the, the school board cannot do a full menued, community sports program. It, that, where it's working successfully, everybody is involved, all the way down to bantam leagues and kids just barely learning to play something. So, it's, it's got to be a community collaborative. But we do have good people at the table.
But, but we probably, it's probably the district's job to provide the, the do's and don'ts concerning the Iowa Athletic.
Yep.
The limitations that you can or can't do, that's probably a school.
And I think we can really be the portal for, for parents and the community to know because we have that ability to reach out to our, our students and our, I think that's a critical piece that's missing right now, is that people can get information from so many ways. I really think we have the ability to take that and run with it and make it clearer for people, how they get involved and what they need to do and some of that, so. Committee's been hard at work.
Thank you.
Anything further?
That is it.
So, we can move on to information from board members. And I'm going to switch it up and I'm going to go to this end. And I'm going to start with Angela this evening.
I like to go first. I'm a weekly, so I'm usually last, as, as you can tell from Friday. I, um, I am actually, the only thing I wanted to say is I love athletic, athletics and I love sports. And as a board member, I went to my first athletic event where I had to remember that I represent the whole, the whole district and that I couldn't say certain things I normally would say. And so, if any parent saw me kind of doing any of that, I apologize. And I am working on making sure that we are cheering for all of the kids. It, it helps no parents on both, in both teams, so that, that, that will be helpful. And that's all I have to say. But I thoroughly enjoyed the freshman ninth-grade East-West game today.
Are you going to impose that standard on all the board members, that they have to cheer for both, or?
Well, if I, I don't have children, so I guess that, that changes it.
I think they do.
I couldn't go home if I cheered for both teams, so.
Yeah, I might not, they might not let me in.
I'll have to live with you, so. I'd like to see them all succeed, but not win.
I have five bedrooms, so.
I just want to thank all the students and teachers for enduring the first semester, the crazy end to that first semester and the patience of the teachers and manipulating things around with the uncontrollable weather. I think we often, you know, need to say, "Thanks, teacher, for doing that" because there's decisions that are made on the district level and the teachers are in the classrooms and they got to get all this done and get those tests distributed and with kids complaining that they don't have their books, so. But just a good start to the second semester and hopefully tomorrow will be a great day.
At least she didn't need horn cases this winter.
Andrea?
Uh, well, this is for the students too this week. I think this week is a full week. Weather looks good, so. We didn't have school today, though.
Oh, no.
Today, or next Monday. January's rough. That's right. Weather, though.
And Mike?
Nothing today.
Lyle?
I have a hand up. So, there'll be a quiz, so number your papers from one to ten.
Graded, weighted?
Graded and weighted.
You have to submit that loud before you get your new grade.
Actually, I sent a note to Mank and Shanley on this. I think the editorial in, in last Sunday's Courier concerning the social promotion was, was particularly, particularly good. And as I shared, we, we actually adopted a no-social-promotion policy. I don't remember when it was, it was many, several years ago. There's no evidence of it in our current policy, so I don't know whether it really never made it or got deleted, or it doesn't really matter because it never got executed. But I think now we really need to put some, some teeth into something. And I don't know, Gary, if you know, this is a older post here. It said there was supposed to be a public hearing on, on the third grade reading issue, January third. I don't know whether that happened or not or where that is. But my point is, regardless of what happens there, I think we have to give serious consideration to making that a Waterloo policy because really, social promotion is the default policy if you, if you read our policies. Can, do you have an update on where that might?
You know, I, I don't know. I think it, it was on the state Board of Education agenda and I'm assuming they, I haven't heard otherwise. I'm assuming they passed the, the policy as they were intending to.
But the point here is, at some point, you have to, and, and the principles in our policy are responsible for the ultimate decision. But I think we have to require evidence of some kind that the student is, has a chance of succeeding in the next grade. Because today, the only people that lose are the, are the kids and maybe the teacher of, of the receiving grade. So, there's no real winners. And I know there's, you know, a thousand reasons why, why you shouldn't retain kids. But, but the, the criteria ought to be, there needs to be evidence for the kid to be promoted into the next grade. And if there's not, then deal, then deal with that. But, but the, the standard has to be, there has to be evidence. That's what I'd like to see in our policy. So, that's for consideration. And there's a thousand things you can do, you know, to, to meet that standard. But the standard ought to be absolute, that's, anyway, that's, I'm, I don't know whether it's a workshop or, you know, this goes to the policy. But, but I think, I just think it's time to be serious about that and particularly with the state already having something concrete proposed. We ought to just adopt it.
Thanks, Lyle. I did get your email. I just hadn't had a chance to. Mike's been gone, so. Lastly, I just want to say that I know that we have had some crazy weather and we haven't had a full week of school yet. But a week from Monday is MLK Day. And I'm very glad that our district does take that day as a day off for our students and our staff. But I also think it's important to remember that that is a day of service. So, I just want to remind people, if you have the opportunity to get out and do something, maybe not that day even, but just to do something and to think about the, the spirit of what that day intended, so. And with that, I'm really hoping that we don't have any more below-zero days in the next few weeks, so. Is there anything further?
I just want to add on that teammates, if you are a mentor teammates, just sent out an email about an opportunity that you can do with your mentee on MLK Day, a day of service. So, if you are a mentor, look through your email or call Ellen and find out about how you can possibly participate in that day. Because MLK, actually Martin Luther King, it wasn't just to have a day off. At Whartburg, we used to call it a day on and they do a full week of service-type things. And, and that's what he wanted to do, see us all working together as a community. And education was very important to him. So, just to add on to what Shanley said, teammate's email. Ellen sent it to you. Look in your junk box.
Great. Is there anything further? If not, I would accept a motion to adjourn and a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.